Start tonight's meeting for the Falls Township Board of Supervisors reorganization. We have several individuals who will be taking a oath of office. There is five individuals that will be receiving the oath. The first one tonight would be Robert J. Harvey, Jr. as supervisor. Judge Jan Wyslowski will be providing the swearing in at this time.
I, Robert J. Harvey, Jr.
I, Robert J. Harvey, Jr.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
To the office of supervisor.
To the office of supervisor.
For the township of Falls.
For the township of Falls.
County of Bucks.
County of Bucks.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Next up will be Mr. Jeffrey Dents being sworn in as supervisor.
Hi, Jeffrey D. Dents.
Hi, Jeffrey Dents.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
To the office of supervisor.
To the office of supervisor.
For the township of Falls.
For the township of Falls.
County of Bucks.
County of Bucks.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So help me God.
So help me God. Okay, before we begin, before we do the rest of the swearing in of auditors, we are going to just do a couple of things reorganization wise. This meeting, the first meeting in January, is always a reorganization meeting for township officials and also borough officials all over the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And it's at this meeting when the board elects its officers, appoints its solicitors and engineers and other professionals, sets its rates and fees and different schedules for the coming year. It's normally not a business meeting so much. But we do have a couple of things to take care of, and we have to begin with a temporary chairman. Is there a motion for a temporary chairman of the Falls Township Board of Supervisors?
Make a motion, appoint Bob Harvey, temporary chair.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, serving as temporary chair then. First item in business is to appoint a chairman. Is there a motion for a chairman for the Falls Township Board of Supervisors for 2016?
I'll make a motion to appoint Bob Harvey.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain. And I thank you very much for the members of the board for the trust they put in me. All right, at this point, we do have a couple items of business in terms of the elected auditors. We did have some confusion in terms of candidates and offices. And Mr. John Reba, who was elected, Reba, who was elected, excuse me, was actually informed that he had to run for reelection when he really didn't. So it was through no fault of his own, but he was technically still a sitting auditor, and he can't be sworn in as a new auditor until he resigns from his first post as auditor. So he has resigned, and so we have to have a motion to approve or to accept his resignation as an auditor.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation letter from John Reba.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, the seat that should have been run for, the person who should have been running for a seat for reelection, is Rosemary Malashevsky, who has been an auditor for several years and has served the township very well. And she was not informed, as she should have been, that she had to run for reelection. And so she wanted, even if she wanted to, she couldn't or didn't. So, but she has expressed interest in remaining an auditor. And so the board has the ability to appoint her to fill a two-year seat as auditor when she can be sworn in this evening. Is there a motion to appoint Rosemary Malashevsky to a two-year seat as auditor for Falls Township?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and so we have all three auditors, Mr. Reba, Mr. Richard Spickler, and Mrs. Malashevsky, who are here this evening to be sworn in. And again, we have District Justice Jan Wyslowski here to do the honors. The first name we have on the list is John Reba.
I, John Reba.
I, John Reba.
Having been duly elected.
To the office of auditor.
To the office of auditor.
For the township of Falls.
For the township of Falls.
County of Bucks.
County of Bucks.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So help me God.
Okay, the next auditor we'll have sworn in is Richard Spickler.
Okay, repeat after me. I, Richard Spickler.
I, Richard Spickler.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
To the office of auditor.
To the office of auditor.
For the township of Falls.
For the township of Falls.
County of Bucks.
County of Bucks.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So help me God.
So help me God. And finally, we'll have the swearing in of Rosemary Malashevsky.
I, Rosemary Malashevsky.
I, Rosemary Malashevsky.
Have been duly appointed.
Had been duly appointed.
To the office of auditor.
To the office of auditor.
For the township of Falls.
For the township of Falls.
County of Bucks.
County of Bucks.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
By behalf of the Democratic Party.
Thank you. Lovely, thank you very much.
Okay, we'll thank everybody for being here, and especially thank Justice Wyslowski for her time this evening. We are going to begin our meeting now, and we're going to begin with the salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to every public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, just as it is.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Pollin, can you pull the board, please?
Mr. Galloway?
Here.
Mr. Brasky?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
Mr. Dents?
Here.
Mr. Rocco?
Here.
Okay, we've done our swearing in, we've also appointed a chairman. Item two is the appointment of a vice chair. Is there a motion for a vice chair?
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Jeffrey Dents, vice chair.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to appoint a secretary treasurer?
Make a motion to appoint Jeff Rocco, secretary treasurer.
Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Assistant secretary treasurer appointment is typically the manager. The chairman, secretary treasurer, and assistant secretary treasurer have the power to sign checks and also sign minutes and other documents for the official township records and for, you know, as accompanying or going along with the law. If in the event the chairman or secretary treasurer can't sign because they just, it's, they can't get here, they're on vacation or something, the assistant secretary treasurer has the authority to sign. As I said, typically, or it's always been the manager who's served as assistant secretary treasurer. Is there a motion then to name Pete Gray as the assistant secretary treasurer for 2016?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's important to know as well, as Mr. Gray goes and gets the public comment sheet, chair, vice chair, secretary treasurer, there's no extra pay, there's no extra, I guess, benefits you could say. It's really just the board organizing itself and naming officers who help, you know, make the meetings run a little smoother and do the official things that have to be done in a government. Only one name on the list. Anybody want to guess who it is?
No, can't guess that one.
Rowan Kenny.
Good evening, Rowan Kenny. Did you like the Christmas gift I gave you?
Yes.
What was it?
You weren't here at the last meeting.
Two meetings.
Did I guess right? Did I guess right?
Yeah, you did. The wife, the wife told me to stay away from you for two weeks, two meetings.
Thank her for us.
Yeah, she's the, we are her present, that's what.
I just want to say tonight, four men in uniform and women, I thank God we have this, we have a free country in the world, most freest country in the world. And I want to thank all the men and women in uniform. I salute yous. Next, you may be blue and blue and gray and brown, the police firemen of the United States. We are the best, there is none better. I salute them. And third, you'll be glad to get rid of me. I want to thank my wife, Shirley. Without her, I wouldn't be here. She keeps me alive. There's nothing on me that ain't broke one time or another. I got bullets in my leg, I got bullets all over me, but I still kick because of her. I thank you, I wish you all Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. May all get along this year. I won't bother about it until I take it to the U.S.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kenny. Those, I'd say my name on the list, is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay, all right, we'll move on. All right, item six is to establish meeting dates and times for regular meetings of the board of supervisors. The board has, for a long time, met on Tuesdays, first and third Tuesdays every month. This year, we are, we've talked about having a change, you know? And so we're going to be moving our meetings to the first and third Mondays at seven o'clock.
Seven AM, no, seven PM, yes.
Seven, yeah, PM.
I could do seven AM.
I know, you're an early riser, but, and I am too, but that's, yeah. And, you know, one of the reasons for doing that is really, Mr. Rocco has, with his job, has had to travel a great deal, and it's more difficult for him to sort of make the trip back and forth from where he's working for many parts of the year, to come back on Tuesdays, and so moving to Mondays is more convenient for him. We have checked with our professionals, we've checked with the staff here. Moving these meetings to Mondays causes no problems or concerns. There were, I think there's two days where there might be a conflict with the holiday of some type, but overall, that's actually a pretty, that's a pretty easy switch to make. And so that's the desire, the place where the direction we're heading in. I don't know if anybody, any comments or concerns or...
No, but I do want to say thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay. All right, so is there a motion then to establish meeting dates and times for the regular board of supervisors meetings, the first and third Mondays of each month, starting at 7:00 PM?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, appointment of township solicitors and special councils and setting compensation. Motion for the solicitor for Falls Township?
Make a motion to approve, Mike Clark, the township solicitor. Compensation rate not to exceed 185 hours per hour, and land development do not exceed 350 per hour.
Is there a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Are we appointing Mike Clark or the firm of Rudolph Clark?
Well, Mike Clark of the, of the firm Rudolph Clark, so I think it doesn't necessarily matter if we...
Yeah, Mike Clark of the firm Rudolph Clark would be fine.
Yeah.
But he's not even here. Okay, that's fine.
Okay, all right, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we have other solicitors, we have land development, labor, and also conflict. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Randy Flagar as our land development solicitor at the rate of 350 an hour.
Okay, motion's made, is there a second?
Seconded.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Our labor council for the past several years has been Jordan Jaeger, who is from Curtin and Hefner. His rates will be $150 an hour for general matters, $180 for arbitrations and litigation. Is there a motion to appoint Jordan Jaeger, and of the firm of Curtin and Hefner?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And we have, in the past, let's see.
Make a motion to appoint Cliff Bidley-Meyer at the firm, Carlos Rickles, hand of Bidley-Meyer as a conflict attorney. The rate do not exceed 170 an hour for 2016.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
In terms of other solicitors, and I think we'll go to other solicitors and special counsel, correct? Have we got everybody we need to?
I think we got everybody.
Okay.
And on behalf of Mr. Clark and Reverend Clark, thank the board for the reappointment.
Mr. Clark is unable to be here this evening. This, again, is, as I said, is a reorganization meeting for every township all over the state, the Commonwealth. And so he is actually at a different township. It makes us a little bit happier to know that that was going to be kind of a contentious meeting, so he's probably getting yelled at and beat up right now. Whereas Ms. Galloway gets to sit here and sort of enjoy the nice and peaceful meeting and, you know, and sit next to Mr. Sullivan. All right, so we'll move on to appointment of township engineers and traffic engineers and setting their compensation. Motion to nominate, and there are, the rate schedules are included. There are many, many, many different rates depending on the different people that work at the engineering firms, there's too many to name, too many numbers and people to name. And so typically, we would refer just to the rate sheet that's provided to us for 2016 as the rates for the engineering firms, if that's the desire of any of the board members.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to appoint T&amp;M at the rate specified in the schedule.
I'll second.
Does that count?
Yeah. Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
I'll make a motion to appoint Remington Vernick and Beach as our traffic engineers at the rate specified.
Seconded.
All right, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right, next item on our agenda, item nine, is appointment of Dynamatrix for information technology services in Falls Township. And the board does have, if I can find it now, a letter from DMX.
I don't have it.
Yeah, I don't either.
Yeah, Mr. Gray? I thought I had it here, oh, here it is, I just found it, sorry, just found it. All right, so John Strazieri of DMX. Okay, and this is for, this would be a two-year agreement, $45,701 per year for IT services. It's everything from township email to all the technical work that happens on computers within the building, and all the updates and software that has to happen on all the different, you know, with this finance department, police department, code enforcement, all of that goes through Dynamatrix. And the work they do really kind of keeps the, especially in today's world, that keeps the, keeps the township going. So total cost for two years would be $91,402.
I'll make the motion to appoint Dynamatrix at the two-year rate of $91,402.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, considered township manager's agreement is item number 10. Okay. The manager's agreement is renewed every year. Township manager will receive a raise of 3.5% over last year's salary.
I'll make a motion to approve the manager's agreement.
And Mr. Dents, that would be subject to finalization of the agreement between my office and Mr. Gray.
Yeah.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And the chief of police contract, or agreement, rather, is also up for renewal, again, every January. Chief of police also receives a 3.5% increase in his salary. Manager...
That motion as well.
Subject to...
Same thing.
Same, yeah, subject to finalization of the agreement between my office and Mr. Wilcox, Chief Wilcox.
Mr. Clark's office or your office?
One and the same.
All right.
Clark, you mean? Oh, you mean the chief of police, I'm sorry.
All right, is there a motion, or you made a motion to achieve...
I made a motion to approve Chief Wilcox's agreement.
Okay, is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, number 12 is appointment of a vacancy board chair. If, in the event, one of the five members of the board is unable to fulfill their duties and is no longer part of the board of supervisors, the, to appoint a new replacement, the remaining four board members would have, I think it's approximately 30 days, to name somebody to fill that seat for the remainder, or until the next municipal election, whatever shorter. If, in the event, because there'd be four board members, if in the event they can't agree, if it's always a two-to-two vote, then a vacancy board chairman would take over and would come onto the board to cast a tie-breaking vote. I don't remember the last time a vacancy board chairman's ever actually had to do that. I think it was 16, 17, maybe 18 years ago. However, for the last, I guess, 12 years, Arlene Goulding, a longtime volunteer and community member, has served as the vacancy board chair, she has expressed interest in continuing in that role if it's ever needed, and she is here this evening. Is there a motion to appoint Mrs. Goulding as the vacancy board chair for 2016?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, we have other boards and commissions and councils, committees, that have different vacancies. Typically, we try to appoint people at the beginning of the year. Some of these boards and commissions have openings that we don't have any letters of interest for, or might have two letters of, or two openings and only one letter of interest. So we do ask that people kind of keep their eyes open and, on the township channel, the township website, and if they see any openings and are interested in, that they can certainly send in a letter of interest. At this point, we have quite a few different vacancies here and letters, a lot of people wish to be reappointed, and so the board will entertain any motions at this point for anyone who wishes to be, who, board members want to appoint or reappoint.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint, reappoint Matthew Nasterek to the Neighborhood Traffic Advisory Committee.
Okay, motions or a second?
Seconded.
Okay, a second, Mr. Galloway, all in favor?
Aye. I'd also like to make a motion to reappoint Beau Ostrawski to the Parks and Recreation Board.
Seconded.
All right, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye. I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Brian Binney to the Water and Sewer Authority Board.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye. I'd also like to make a motion to appoint Doug Maul, reappoint Doug Maul to the zoning hearing board.
All right, that has to be, all right, zoning boards are resolutions, so this would be resolution 16-1?
Yes.
That's an easy, I figured that one out by myself. Okay, motion, okay, so resolution to appoint Doug Maul to a full term on the zoning hearing board, resolution 16-1, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'll make a motion to reappoint Wes Placeded to the Environmental Advisory Council.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion to appoint Bob Hedden, Robert Hedden, to the Board of Appeals.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to appoint Bill Renson to the Cable Advisory Board.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion to appoint Tom Stafford to the Cable Advisory Board.
Does he have a letter of interest, or...
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. I apologize.
That's right. I'll make a motion to appoint Joanne Cosgrove to the Shatrie Commission.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to appoint Loretta Perry to the Planning Commission.
Seconded.
Loretta's actually being reappointed to the Planning Commission.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Make a motion to appoint John Haney to the Planning Commission.
Seconded.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. For the Police Pension Commission, we have two representatives from the public, as well as a Board Representative, who have to be appointed yearly. And then, the Police Department appoints one member, and then, Mr. Gray also sits on that committee. I'll make a motion to reappoint Henry Conroy to the Police Pension Committee.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'll make an appointment, or make a motion to appoint, reappoint Thomas Roche to the Police Pension Committee.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And finally, I make a motion to reappoint Brian Galloway as the Board Representative to the Police Pension Committee.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think that's, yeah, the ones that, as I said, we do have some more openings on a couple of different Boards. Shade Tree Commission has an opening. Historic Preservation, Environmental Advisory Council has a vacancy. Community and Economic Development Commission, Cable Advisory Board, has some openings as well. And these, obviously, we can make appointments anytime during the year, and so, we ask people, if they're interested, to send letters and emails in, or emails into the township, and we can take a look at them and appoint people over the course of, hopefully, the next couple of weeks. Okay. All right. All right. Next, we have an Appointment of Depositories by Resolution. Mr. Gray, want to explain this for us, please?
Yes. The Township prepared a resolution for Board consideration, Board consideration tonight for a list of Township depositories for 2016. This list includes 10 banking facilities that are available in the Township. Of the 10, there are seven we use, three we do not at this time. The seven are First National Bank of Newtown, First Service Bank, Pliget, SCI Investments, Invest, JP Morgan Chase, and TD Bank. And they're used for various banking for the Township. The three that we do not use are Bank of America, First Trust Bank, and Citizens Bank. And these banks could be used at any time through the calendar year. The Board is asked to consider this resolution for banking depositories.
So, this would be 16-2?
Two.
Now, Mr. Gray, how do we determine who, what banks to use and for what purpose?
We have various banks. JP Morgan is used for our bonds. First National Bank and Trust is used for our payroll and our general fund. For Service, we have money sitting there for investment purposes. Pliget is also used for investments, as is SCI. SCI holds our long-term restricted funds and our police pension. And Invest is a vehicle provided by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And we always check the rates. They're checked on a monthly basis and also at maturity for when the bonds come due. So, Mrs. Rukoff is always looking for the best rate available.
Okay. And so, this gives us, gives rather the Finance Department and yourself the ability to move money around to get the best investment we can for the township.
That's right. And we do do that periodically. We move it from First National to another investment vehicle to get the best rate we can.
Okay. All right. Comments or questions?
No.
Any public comment? All right, so we're looking at Resolution 16-2, the depositories for the Township of Falls for 2016. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 16-2.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 15, Recommendation to the Board of Auditors to Set the Treasurer's Bond at $2 Million. We swore in three auditors earlier this evening, and for people that aren't quite sure, Falls Township is designated as a second-class township by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Second class only in the sense of our population. Townships that are bigger than us, for example, Ben Salem and Bristol Township, more densely populated, are called first-class townships, simply because of population. But second-class townships have auditors that are elected. Most of Pennsylvania is made up of second-class townships. Most of them are much, 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 much smaller than us. And so, in townships that are very, very small and have very, very small budgets, the elected auditors actually audit all the books for that township. We're talking about townships that might have, you know, 2,000 people in the entire, you know, entire township, and so, budgets are very tiny compared to ours. With a township our size, like most of the townships in Bucks County, are second-class townships that are big like us, we hire auditors because the money we're talking about is really very, very, very big. And so, auditors have that role to play, but here, they don't. The one role they do play here in the township, and they meet tomorrow to sort of authorize this, is recommending the Treasurer's Bond. And the Treasurer's Bond is essentially an insurance policy to make sure that, you know, myself, or Mr. Gray, or Mr. Rocco, who can sign checks, don't write one to ourselves and disappear to, like Tahiti or something. And so, this is kind of, you know, yeah. This is basically just, you know, setting the bond to make sure that the township is protected against any kind of fraud, if there's anything of that nature. And so, that's what we're recommending through Mr. Gray and Mrs. Rukoff, their recommendation that the bond be set at $2 Million. Any comments or questions from Mr. Gray? Okay. Is there a motion then to recommend to the Board of Auditors to set the Treasurer's Bond at $2 Million?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item 16, Nominate Delegates and Alternate Delegates to the State Convention for Townships. That's April 17th to the 20th. We never usually nominate anybody at this meeting. Typically, we kind of see if anybody has the ability to go to this meeting. It happens during the week. It's not over a weekend, and so, I'm, I've never been able to go, myself. Assuming Mr. Galloway has the same calendar as me, and assuming he's not going to be able to go either. But we can appoint people at any time as the official delegates for the township, so I'm assuming that, unless someone's able to volunteer at this point. Nobody's calendar looks...
We could do it later?
Yeah, we can do whatever.
Okay.
So, check your calendars and just see if anything opens up. I think it's usually like a Sunday through Wednesday or something like that, isn't it? So, I think, have you gone before?
I have gone.
Yeah. So, okay. So, we can come back to that at a later date. Item 16 is Consider Fee Schedule for Code, Fire, and Parks and Recreation. Mr. Gray, do you want to give a summary of the changes or updates on this fee schedule?
Mr. Harvey, I can actually jump in on that. Not a ton of changes this year. There's one change from the Fire Marshal's Office that adds in a reinspection fee of $15 for home daycare facilities. Fire fee schedules provided no fees. The Fire Marshal's Office is going back multiple times at the same facility for just one fee of, I think it was $50. The second set of changes have to do with the Pine Wood Pool membership fees. There's a referral discount of $25 for any member who refers a new member, and that new member purchases a seasonal pass before August 1st. They also add, we also add in a caregiver pass for any nanny or babysitter that's accompanying a child that is part of a family membership, so that they don't have to purchase a daily pass every day.
Okay. All right. All good ideas. Okay. All right. Any comments or questions?
No.
None.
Okay. So, this would be Resolution 16-3. All right. Approving the fee schedules for Code, Fire, and Parks and Recreation for 2016. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 16-3?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Minutes for December 15th, 2015. Any comments, corrections, or suggestions?
Excellent minutes, as always, Mrs. Pullen.
Okay. If there's no motion, if there's no changes or corrections, is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented for December 15th?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Epstein, I wasn't here.
Okay. Executive session, we actually held an executive session before the meeting. Mrs. Gallagher, can you give us a summary, please?
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. The Board held an executive session at 6:00 PM tonight to discuss various members of personnel.
Thank you. All right. Manager Comment, Mr. Gray?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. Board Comment. Mr. Rocco?
Yeah, I just want to congratulate all, you know, the three auditors, of course, my fellow supervisors, and also thank Judge Wyslawski for coming out tonight. Today's my son's 15th birthday. He's not here, but happy birthday, Brady. And also, thank you guys for changing the schedule to Monday. Appreciate that. So, that's it. Happy New Year. Stay warm.
Mr. Dent?
I'd like to thank everyone once again for their support, re-electing me to another six-year term. Thank the five of you, five, four of you, for your support again, and Mrs. Wyslawski for taking the time out of her day to come swear to us, and that's all I have for the night.
Mr. Brasky?
Same, same with me. Just happy new year, everybody, and congratulations, everyone, I was sworn in tonight, and I look forward to another great year with everyone up here.
Mr. Galloway?
Sounds like the same thing. Look forward to the start of a, it's going to be a great year. I enjoy serving on this Board, and I'm in particular very proud to be serving with these gentlemen. And I wish everyone a happy new year. Thank you.
And I'll disclose by, you know, being sort of, I guess, I might be, couldn't just say ditto, but I would thank everybody, the support, obviously, my family, who was here[1688.87]